All right, it is six o'clock, so we will go ahead and get started. Roll call.
Susan Skiris.
Here.
Joseph Jones.
Here.
Michael Libby.
Here.
Lauren Campbell. And Teresa Harms. Oh, she is waiting, so I got her.
Could you count her as present?
I did count her as present, yes.
All right. Please join me in a digital pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Item two, approval of the agenda motion.
Promote.
Second.
Roll call.
Susan Skiris.
Yes.
Joseph Jones.
Yes.
Michael Libby.
Yes.
Lauren Campbell.
Yes.
And Teresa Harms.
Yes.
And three, public hearings, three A, public hearing on ordinance number twenty-two oh two, an ordinance amending chapter fifty-five of the Code of Ordinances for the city of Windsor Heights related to animal trapping.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Susan Skiris.
Yes.
Joseph Jones.
Yes.
Michael Libby.
Yes.
Lauren Campbell.
Yes.
And Teresa Harms.
Yes.
Is there any member of the public who wishes to speak on this item? Or alternatively, Travis, have you received anything?
I've not seen anything in my email or telephone calls. We got a few people here.
Any discussion among council? All right, hearing nothing, motion to close the public hearing.
Promote. Second.
I think we have somebody that is, their audio is just now joining. It's the picture of the Grand Canyon. Should we give them a chance in case that's what they're joining to speak on? Just says iPhone, the person that just, if the person that just joined.
All right, for the person that just joined, we are currently on item three A, a public hearing on animal trapping. If you wanted to speak on that, now would be the appropriate time. I will give you a second or two. Okay, motion to close the public hearing.
Yeah, motion by Harms, second by Libby.
All right, roll call.
Susan Skiris.
Yes.
Joseph Jones.
Yes.
Michael Libby.
Yes.
Lauren Campbell.
Yes.
And Teresa Harms.
Yes.
Three B, consideration of the first reading of ordinance number twenty-two oh two, an ordinance amending chapter fifty-five of the Code of Ordinances for the city of Windsor Heights related to animal trapping, motion.
So moved. Second.
Roll call.
Susan Skiris.
Yes.
Joseph Jones.
Yes.
Michael Libby.
Yes.
Lauren Campbell. And Teresa Harms.
Yes.
Three C, public hearing on ordinance number twenty-two oh three, an ordinance amending chapter forty of the Code of Ordinances for the city of Windsor Heights related to animal trapping, motion.
So moved.
Second. Second.
Roll call.
Susan Skiris.
Yes.
Joseph Jones.
Yes.
Michael Libby.
Yes.
Lauren Campbell.
Yes.
And Teresa Harms.
Yes.
Anything from the public? Travis, any comments?
No, they're pretty much related, so I don't see anything.
If there's no discussion, council, move to close.
So moved.
So moved, I'll second.
Roll call.
Susan Skiris.
Yes.
Joseph Jones.
Yes.
Michael Libby.
Yes.
Lauren Campbell.
Yes.
And Teresa Harms.
Yes.
Three D, consideration of the first reading of ordinance number twenty-two oh three, an ordinance amending chapter forty of the Code of Ordinances for the city of Windsor Heights related to animal trapping, motion.
Moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Susan Skiris.
Yes.
Joseph Jones.
Yes.
Michael Libby.
Yes.
Lauren Campbell.
Yes.
And Teresa Harms.
Yes.
Item four, public forum. This is the time set aside for comments from the public on topics of city business other than those listed on the agenda. No action may be taken. If you would like to speak, please unmute yourself, identify yourself by name, your address, and please keep your comments to no more than five minutes. Is there anybody from the public who would like to speak?
Uh, yes, please.
Um, is it Mr. Van Pelt?
Yes, it is.
All right, Mr. Van Pelt, what's your address?
My address is seventy, seventy-two oh nine Sunset Terrace.
Go ahead, please.
Um, so given the recent call for members of the public to join the Board of Adjustment, I had a brief look at previous documents, public documents from the Board of Adjustments. Very few seem to be available. Uh, the documents that were available did cause me some level of concern. Going through the documents, it seems that city ordinances are not very much consistently applied. It kind of seems to me, the impression arises that it is more important to pay three hundred dollars for an application and to have good standing with the city than it is to actually be in compliance. Uh, as an example, the rebuilding of the School Street project. This is an example, one of many that I saw going through the documents. So the city code actually lists a few requirements for a variance. Uh, one of those being is that it causes unnecessary hardship that the situation is caused through, you know, no fault of anyone, it's just odd lots, lot sizes, that sort of thing. In this case, for the reconstruction of School Street, uh, the complete appeal text was, we would like to rebuild the same design as was existing, using the same footprint. However, the building does not comply with the new zoning. And that was it. Uh, Mr. Durham then recommended to the Board of Adjustment, uh, in his capacity as city administrator, that the variants would be issued, uh, and that happened. Uh, none of the bullet points in the city code to show that any hardship was there to show which, um, variance was actually needed. None of that was actually discussed, and that seems to be a common theme with variances. Uh, so this was just an example. Uh, I personally, I have no problem with the project, obviously. I, it's none of my business. But it does seem that the city code for Windsor Heights is overly strict at times. Uh, right now, I believe there's one to put up a business sign. Uh, again, no demonstration of hardship is in the actual request. Uh, I assume it will be approved, which I have no problem with. So basically, I would ask the City Council to review previous variances that were issued, uh, and whether or not the Code of Ordinances can be modified so that those requests can be actually accommodated without having to issue a variance and without homeowners needing to pay three hundred dollars and going through the whole Board of Adjustment ceremony. That was pretty much what I wanted to say. Thank you for your time.
Ms. Van Pelt, I appreciate your comments. Um, real quick, the the, um, comments you're making, are they, they're based upon what you're reading? Um, obviously, as far as what's posted on the website.
Correct.
Not, not what may have happened or been said at a meeting, is that right?
That is correct.
Okay.
I'm basing it on the minutes from the meetings and the variances as they were filed with the Board of Ordinances.
Okay.
Or the Board of Adjustments, sorry.
Okay. I'd like to look at, um, what was potentially discussed at the meetings versus, you know, what was included in the minutes. Um, and if you, if you would, if you wouldn't mind, I'd follow up with you.
Sure.
How would I do that?
Um, I don't know, through email might be easiest.
Will you DM me your email?
Yes.
I can, I can also provide that to council as well in case they have some comments or concerns.
Sure.
Okay, I appreciate your.
Thank you.
Any other members of the public? Okay, thank you. Item five, consent agenda. Motion.
Promote. I will second.
Okay, so I didn't hear any of that, so I, Teresa, would you like to motion or second? Or who made the motion?
Um, all motion, Joseph second.
Okay, sounds good, thank you.
All right, thank you, roll call.
Susan Skiris.
Yes.
Joseph Jones.
Yes.
Michael Libby.
Yes.
Lauren Campbell.
Yes.
And Teresa Harms.
Yes.
Six A, new business. Fiscal year twenty-three budget presentation with the draft CIP and public comment. Rochelle, I believe this is your show.
Thank you. Um, hopefully everyone got their binders and, um, were able to maybe look through. Tonight isn't meant to be any sort of deep discussion on the budget. It's just an introduction. And then, um, so I'll just start by saying that, um, we will do this introduction tonight and then individual meetings can happen, um, next week or the following week. And then on the twenty-first of February, we'll actually do the, um, CIP budget work session. So then we can really dig in deep and, um, have some good discussion on it, because I know you guys have only just seen it, so I don't, I don't want to, um, put you on the spot tonight. Then we'll also have the maximum property tax hearing on the seventh of March, and then we'll do the budget public hearing on the twenty-first. So at all these times, the public will have access to come and speak if they like. Um, tonight is actually what we're calling public forum, so if anyone would like to speak, we'll give them a chance after I've done a little bit of the budget presentation. But if at any point you have questions, just jump in, because you know how I am. I'll answer whatever I can. Um, the first thing I think tonight is we really want to, um, look at recommending a decrease in the property valuation or property, the tax levy of seventy-one cents. And how you, how we can accomplish that is just strictly through our employee benefits levies. Um, we have a really healthy balance in there right now. And if we go ahead and, and take that levy decrease, we could still take that levy decrease for the next eight to ten years and still have enough money in that fund. If all things stay the same as they are today. Now, we all know insurance goes up and down, everything, all things go up and down. So, um, if things were the same as they are right now, we could go eight or ten years with that additional levy decrease. So, um, does that, does that give anybody heartburn? That big of a decrease?
I guess when you talk about changes, how, 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 how big a changes are we talking about here?
Uh, big of, you mean if, if, um, like, say, insurance went up by twenty-five percent. It's then our, the amount of years that we, we could go out is probably going to be decreased by two or three. So it, it really isn't going to affect, there's, there's a million dollars in the fund right now, a little over a million dollars. And we, I need like two hundred thousand or less every year just to keep on track. So we're doing really, really well in that fund. So that's the first piece. Um, the second piece, I really kind of wanted to reiterate, um, it's actually on page, oh, you know, the other thing with the levy rate, um, decrease, I just wanted to mention that, that actually, the actual dollar amount is only a hundred and twenty-one, a hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars. So if we decrease by seventy-one cents, it only decreases our actual revenues by a hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars. So it's not a huge decrease, but it does give a nice um, break to the taxpayers. Um, let's see, the, the other thing I wanted to talk about, just to touch on briefly, um, is lost, and I'm looking at page nine of the executive summary, or the actual, in your binder, page nine. Um, lost, um, this year, um, in September, we got a letter that stated that the, um, the Department of Revenue actually made a couple of mistakes when they were calculating, um, twenty fiscal year twenty-twenty numbers for lost. And what that did was the cities of Clive, Urbendale, and West Des Moines actually had population numbers in the system that were incorrect, which meant that lost went to them that shouldn't have. So they were, they were given more lost than they should have. And that meant the other cities in Polk County were given less than they should have. Well, they did a reconciliation payment, and that, that payment to us was about three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. So that was a nice chunk of change for the city, which in this budget, or if we needed to amend, we could, we could amend it for fiscal year twenty-two. It meant a nice bump for us. They did go ahead and revise the payments for the coming for fiscal year twenty-three, and, um, it does, we will increase, um, it's about a hundred and forty thousand dollars for us. Is it the increase for fiscal year twenty-three? So it's nice, it, we're doing well in, from the loss perspective, it really is. It, it's a good revenue source for the city. Um, the last thing I really wanted to touch on before talking about, um, the CIP is the capital projects. Um, and I know this number looks like crazy, maybe. Um, the number that we're looking at for projects is nine million, one hundred twenty-nine thousand, nine hundred ninety-one dollars. But if you guys could look at page twenty-two, so I could just go over that a little bit. What this really is, um, if you look at the activity, um, side, and it says future road projects, the current fund balance in there is a million dollars. And that is, we actually did for fiscal year twenty-two, we did budget that. We budgeted for road projects, but we've not done any of those road projects. So if we decide to use the money in fiscal year twenty-two, it won't be available for twenty-three. But, um, if it didn't get used, I wanted to be sure that we included it again in twenty-three. Within the budget under capital projects, I put future road projects, ATE funds, and the amount of one million, five hundred seventy-eight thousand dollars. That money was allocated fiscal year twenty-two for, um, park projects and, uh, the public safety parking lot. Um, none of those things have been done yet, so again, just reallocating the money in case it doesn't get used. Um, ATE funds as, that, I put them in here as future road projects, but they can be used for any projects, any capital projects. Um, the next line is lost, one million, three hundred eighty-three thousand, five twenty-six. So these are unallocated lost funds. Um, I put them on there again as future road projects, but they can be used for any projects that you guys desire. The other items on the list, University Avenue and Twenty-Twenty Street Projects, the amounts that are there. Yeah, sure, go ahead.
Oh, sorry, sorry, just before you go on, real quick, on that, um, that loss, that, that's what we allocated twenty-twenty-two? You didn't say which fiscal.
Sorry, some of it, it, it's actually, um, fiscal year twenty-two is eight hundred seventy-five thousand, two twenty-six, and fiscal year twenty-three is five hundred eight thousand, three hundred.
Thank you.
And that was just the unallocated funds. There are funds that are allocated, have to be allocated for specific things, so.
Yep, okay, thanks for the clarification.
Sure. Um, and so then University and Twenty-Twenty Street Projects. Um, the balances that you see there, the proposed amounts, um, those are the amounts that are in the funds currently. Those are not the amounts that we still owe on the projects, though. So what this, what this means is there's extra funding in both of those projects to the tune of one million, six hundred seventy-six thousand dollars. Now, that's an estimate because we don't know what's going to happen, if, all things considered. Um, it's, it's an estimate on the low side, but it is funds that we can use, um, for other street projects. Those two specifically have to be used for street projects. The other projects on the plan, Seventy-third Street Engineering, this was actually, we already even had this in place within the contract with, um, Bolton and Mank. Um, the American Rescue Plan Act funds, that will be the, the total that we'll have, will receive in fiscal year twenty-three. We originally talked about using those for flood mitigation. Um, Walnut Creek Stream Stabilization, this is a project that, um, Dalton talked about and had, um, uh, a, uh, grant application out for five hundred thousand dollars, and so our portion would be two hundred. I put it in as two fifty, just in case. Um, but that would only happen if we get the grant. If we don't, even though it's budgeted, it doesn't mean that we would actually use the money. Um, and then the ERP, um, these are the expenditures this year, police sixty-seven thousand, fire six thousand, streets three hundred thousand, and IT fourteen thousand. Remember, this is for equipment. And the actual ERP is at the back of your, um, uh, of your binder, so you could see specifically what those are for. Does anybody have any questions about that? I know it's a lot.
Yeah, Rochelle, I, my only question is, and I think you and I have discussed this earlier, um, the current moves in the legislature regarding lost funds uh, could put a real damper on us, could it not, in the future?
It, it could, if they took lost and did what they did with the backfill, it, it really could. It could do the city some damage, and it would be specifically money that would go towards capital projects for us. We don't use lost for operating expenses. I, 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 that's not something I, um, think is a smart move. And I think that, um, we only should use revenues that we know are secure for that, um, for operating expenses. Um, so that's why these things are, that's why there's so much money in capital projects from lost.
Well, I spoke as a private citizen with, uh, Representative Confrist, and she, uh, you know, she opposes that, uh, Senate bill as well. And, um, so we'll see where all this goes. Thank you.
Teresa, have you heard anything?
Happy to share. So the Senate did pass their, um, tax bill out of committee, or out of committee, so it is eligible for debate on the Senate floor. I don't suspect that'll happen until after the first funnel deadline. They do have some debate tomorrow, but, um, it's not on that list. So I know that there's lots of, uh, discussions, uh, to be had between the House and the Senate. I would just note that, um, although it's a, if you look at the legislation, it, um, moves, it, it increases to a seven percent statewide sales tax, so implementing the I-Will or the, um, Natural Resources, uh, Trust, um, so then three eights essentially of that, um, every penny that comes in would, in essence, go to the trust and then, but it's how they've got it set up, it's, it should be, and they recognize that there is an error and they're working. I know the League of Cities is working very closely with, uh, Senator Dawson and, uh, the Republican Caucus to fix that. Essentially, the intent of that was, is a penny in, a penny out. And they're hoping, and the analysis right now would demonstrate that you would, they would be actually collecting more revenues, um, than currently through lost, because you, then you would implement in all the cities currently that don't, or the counties, I think there's four counties, and I don't know, thirty, maybe thirty-plus cities that don't have, um, local option sales tax right now, and then, uh, secondarily, that you have a whole court of, um, internet sales that aren't, uh, collected, uh, at the seven percent rate, and so you would have more taxes coming in from that. So I just share, um, don't have a position on the bill, but just recognizing that the idea is penny in, a penny back to the city. Um, however, then you are subject to, I know there's concern about, um, you know, they make the commitment today, and then, you know, how does that? We saw what happened last year with backfill, and where, how would that play into the future? So, um, again, just recognizing, I know the League of Cities, like I said, they're working on getting the specific, um, allocations for each city and what that would look like, um, and the financial distributions and how that impacts. And I know that they're hoping to have that sometime soon, but that information is not available yet.
Thank you, thank you for that update. Yeah, it's, it, it makes me nervous, but we'll see, we'll see what happens. Um, so, does anybody have any questions before I move on? The, um, last thing I really wanted to, to touch on is the CIP, and it's at the very back of the binder. Um, and this is just a draft, obviously, but, um, this draft did go to the Public Works Committee, and, um, I won't speak for them, but the gist of it was, um, that we would look at flood mitigation first. They are hoping flood mitigation first. Second, um, Seventy-third Street, and then third, um, Sixty-Eighth Street, they wanted to move that one up. Um, so that was, um, what the recommendation was from the Public Works Committee. The Public Works Committee also did recommend that we, uh, utilize those funds from the million dollars that was the current balance of the street projects, and also the ATE funds to move those, and then when you combine those, it would actually pay for Sixty-Eighth Street. So, um, we look at the actual dollar figure, though, of, um, capital projects, potential street monies. If you used all those monies for streets, um, you're looking at five point six million dollars. Right now, for fiscal year twenty-two, all those capital, that capital project money for streets, you, it's three point four million dollars today, um, on hand, and then available for fiscal year twenty-three is another two point one eight four million. So there is some of it available now, but I do want to reiterate that, even though I've got it marked here to go to street projects, um, there are plenty of, of, um, park projects that could be funded with the ATE funds and the lost funds. Um, maybe you guys want to do a mix. Um, what, obviously, whatever you want to do, I will plug it into the budget. But I just want you to be aware that I only plugged it into the budget for streets, because that was their recommendation, so. But you guys are the bosses, so you get to decide. Um, does anyone have any, I know this is really high level, and I could literally talk for hours, but, um, I'm sure you don't want to hear me. Is, does anyone have any questions?
Rochelle, I just wanted to say thank you for all of your work in putting this together, um, in my, um, I think this is maybe my seventh budget, um, for, uh, City Council. Um, this is the most, uh, org-
Um, for, uh, City Council, um, this is the most organized and well-put-together budget. We've seen, I, I've, I in my tenure have seen, so congratulations to you. I know that we asked you with, um, and requested more of a formal, um, approach to this. And so I really appreciate all the work that went in, um, to putting this together. And not only do I appreciate it, but it makes, I mean, it's, it's, it's very well done and I hope our, and I'm confident our residents will too. So thank you for your work on this.
Oh, you're welcome. Thank you. Um, and I can't, I'm not gonna take even a tiny bit of the credit, except for the numbers and the words. But the, the formatting is, is definitely done, so he had the vision and we just worked together to put it all into a nice format. I did feel proud of it this year, I really did.
Rochelle.
Well. Oh, I'm sorry, just real, I, I'll just finish by saying, um, I'm sure that, um, I know that there's, it probably took a whole team to put this together. In particular, the departments to come up with their numbers, so thanks to the whole, you know, team, the whole staff team to, for doing that, so.
Thank you.
I, I would echo that, Rochelle, and I, I look forward to visiting with you, I think, tomorrow. As a matter of fact, we're gonna have a kind of an in-depth conversation about this, so thank you very much for that as well.
Yeah, you're welcome. And if anyone hasn't scheduled yet and you want to, um, just let me know, via email or phone, whatever. Um, and I will get you on the schedule. Any other questions, though?
Rochelle, I had a quick question. Um, so I, on page eighteen, of course, the special event, um, budget, something that I wanted to look for. Um, and I, I see that in FY twenty-one, uh, we spent four thousand five hundred one dollars. I know our events were more expensive than that, but it was often, um, offset by fundraising. Do we keep track anywhere of the actual total cost of things like special events where they're then offset by? Um, by those donations?
Sure, so the actual, anytime you would see like FY twenty-one actual numbers, that actually would be the actual dollar figure we spent. Irregardless of any, um, donations we would have got in. So you would just see the donations on the revenue side, so that would have been actual expenses for fiscal year twenty-one, but fiscal year twenty-one was COVID, so.
Yeah, no, no, that makes sense, and I get that that four thousand five hundred one dollars is like would actually like hit our checkbook, which of course is, is the most important part of that. Just wondering, um, about, uh, things that didn't come in necessarily as revenue, but like were donated in kind or whatever. Just thinking about the actual cost of the events that we have, like, we provided more than four thousand dollars worth of value, right? And is, is kind of what I was thinking, and so wondering if we are keeping track of that anywhere, and if not, we, we can in the future.
Well, I have kept track of the moves in the park, but I didn't have numbers like how many pizzas were ordered or how many cookies were ordered, how much popcorn. So I really couldn't, um, do that kind of analysis on that level, but we can certainly work on something like that.
I think it'll be easy to, to track it, uh, going forward, just wondered for the, for the historical purposes, thanks so much.
Yeah, and if you have, if I can give you whatever I have, I'll do it for sure.
Thanks, I know I'm trying to bug you, so I'll do that.
Keep in mind that, uh, FY twenty-one, the fireworks, we paid for them in FY twenty. They didn't display because of COVID, so that was carried over to twenty-one, so that's. I don't know what we spent on those fifteen, seven thousand, ten thousand, something like that.
It was a little over ten, like ten thousand seven hundred, I think.
But that, that's part of that drop.
So true, I forgot about that, Chad, thank you.
Any other questions from council?
Rochelle, I just have a quick question. Um, when I'm looking at the financial, the financial snapshots. So, um, when you look at like Public Works, it's, and I'm just gonna do the percentage because it's easier that way. Um, Public Works is, has five percent, and then you go to, um, like Culture and Rec. Two percent, Community and Economic Development, two percent, and some of these actually fill the positions for Public Works, correct? Some of these, so it's kind of a little misleading that, I mean, when you look at it, that Public Works is only five percent. And Public Safety is eighteen percent. I think that that's kind of a little misleading to. The general public who thinks we spend thirteen percent more on, or, you, yeah, thirteen percent more on Public Works. Than we do Public Safety, but it's not, unless you start reading through this, if you're just looking at this graph itself. It's, it's kind of, I don't want to say misleading, because you're not doing that by any stretch, it's just maybe.
Right, and you, you would definitely have to dig into the departmental pages to understand that those are our full-time employees included in those budgets. And we, that's why we included that at the tops of those pages, like Culture and Recreation, it does say how many FTEs. Um, yeah, two point two FT, full-time employees, um, Public Works is four point zero five full-time employees. Um, and then, um, yeah, so you would have to dig in a little bit, because it doesn't give you that. Um, and from the financial snapshot, that's just, unfortunately, just a snapshot, so you're right, you would have to dig in to see that.
Is there a way that we could, I don't know, and you, you don't have to do it on this budget, but is there a way that we can put it out there? You know, like, um, I don't know if it's a written note or something, you know, um, just because it really is misleading. And people say to me, well, eighteen percent of the budget is going to Public Safety and five percent's going to Public Works. Well, yes, but then you also add in blah, 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 and that brings the totals up higher. And, you know, so I, I don't want to say that our residents don't read through the budget. But I don't think that the budget is like their top priority of things to read before they go to sleep, unless they want to go to sleep, you know?
Yeah, and I will say, this is the, this across, um, financial, um, directors, get this a lot. That that number in every single city looks huge, it looks enormous. Public Safety looks like, in, in every city, you, you'll, you look at anyone's budget, it looks exactly the same way. And that's just, it, it's just unfortunately, the cost of doing business. And, um, yeah, we could, we could actually add some footnotes, um, to these pages, um, next year to maybe give it a little bit more. Help people understand it or see it more.
Just because if, if it's right there in front of your face, then you're more apt to read it than to go from page twelve into twenty-two, or, you know, whatever.
Sure, sure, I could even put, um, includes, um, so many FTEs, I can include that in even the wording next year. I can do that for sure, that's a, that's a good, a good idea.
And then I have another question here. Um, thank you for answering some of my questions. I read through things and wanted to make sure that I was correct in, you know, kind of what I thought was occurring. Um, so thank you for going through and kind of reading through, um, stuff like that. If I remember correctly, in Public Safety, fifty thousand dollars of that building inspections, that's kind of just. That has to be budgeted through him, through, or through Public Safety, but that's not really anything that Public Safety has control over, correct? That's just one of those weird loopholes that adds another fifty thousand dollars to the eighteen percent of Public Safety.
One hundred percent, that is exactly right. Um, and it has to do with the way the state forms, um, layer all those things. And there, building inspections is considered Public Safety, makes sense, because it would be for the safety of the public. Um, but you're right, it does, it does, um, increase that Public Safety budget. So it's good to help, uh, for people to know that there are lots of components, which I thought this helped, the, these charts this year helped. So you can see what's included in all that Public Safety budget, um, like animal control is included in Public Safety. Um, and then obviously building inspections, and from the building inspection side, we budget fifty thousand. But then, anything that we budget, we are gonna get back on the revenue side, um, dollar for dollar, so.
Right, yeah. And then it's, how much are we budgeting, um, in total for tree removal? Are we planning on having a whole bunch of trees come down in fiscal year twenty-three? I, I saw it in two different spots that we were budgeting, and both of those spots kind of had some high percentage additions.
Sure, in, um, Public Works, in the actual Public Works departmental expenditures, it's right-of-way forestry. So trees that are in the right-of-way, um, would be public, um, we would have to take care of as the city. And then I think that amount this year. Um, it was a twelve percent increase, and the actual dollar figure was only four thousand five hundred.
So that's how much we budgeted, or that's how much we increased in the twelve percent?
That's how much we budget, that's how much we increased, four thousand five hundred.
So how much in total would the tree removals be?
Um, yeah, let me see if I have that just really quickly, or if not, I can get it to you.
I was gonna say, if you want to email me, since I put you on the spot.
Sure, no, it's no problem. I've got the, I've got it right here in front of me, but I just don't know if I can, um, pull it. Oh wait, full-time forestry, I've got it right here, um. Professional fees, forestry, contracted services. Uh, in fiscal year twenty-one, we budgeted five, and for fiscal year twenty, I'm sorry, twenty-two, we budgeted five. And we increased it in, we increased it to ten, so we doubled it. Um, and the note here from the reason for the change, for, so far in fiscal year twenty-two, we've expended five thousand seven hundred dollars. The increase in this line is to count for, for more work in the future.
Let me, I was going off the budget, or the year, your handy-dandy, um, binder. And I want to go back, because I highlighted, um, because I think it's in two spots, it's not just the forestry, it's like in another spot.
It's in parks as well, sure, so it would be any trees that need to be removed in the parks. I'm sorry, you know what, that actually was the parks, I just told you the parks number, um. And now let me tell you the right-of-way number. Forestry. Right-of-way forestry, it's got its own lines even, uh, contracted services. It went from fifteen thousand in twenty-two to twenty thousand in twenty-three. So you have to remember, it's a brand-new, totally brand-new, and that, this is only this, that's the second year we're budgeting for forestry. So it's kind of a, what, do we know what, it might be actually over, overstated a little bit, but it's better to be overstated than under. So, yeah, fif, it went from fifteen to twenty. For forestry, but the entire budget actually went down by two point one nine percent, so, for Public Works.
And I think that's all basically, right now, I'm sure I'll review it and have more questions for you again.
Yeah, anytime.
Um, this is a time for public comment, there will obviously be public comment down the line. Because we will have public hearings on this budget, uh, but as far as right now, is there anybody, any member of the public? Who wishes to, uh, make any comments or speak on the budget presentation? Hearing nothing, um, any final things from, uh, from, uh, council? I would encourage you all to obviously set up your individual meetings with Rochelle. Um, so you can ask her a number of prodding questions, and she can answer all of them with, uh, great delight. All right. Six B, consideration of changes to the governing body rules of procedure, uh, motion.
So moved to, second.
Discussion, or I suppose I can provide some discussion, being that this, these were the rules. Um, that we were supposed to discuss last time. Um. The majority of them are already in effect, the only language that has been added is under nine. Which is under committees, boards, and commissions. Uh, essentially, this is sort of how we already operate and how we've operated for years, it's just not memorialized anywhere. Uh, but in addition to that, it also, um, talks about potentially setting sizes, uh, of the committees. Who should be involved, it talks about procedure, voting, uh, et cetera. So, this is, um, this has been presented for, for council to discuss, um, so, discuss, please.
Well, you answered my question that I had, I just wanted to make sure that I wasn't missing anything more than that, uh, number nine was new and had the nice red. Type, so that kind of helped set that off, so I appreciate that.
Uh, I appreciate the, uh, direction that it gives for the committees, that we need to have a chair, um, keeping minutes. Um, and that, uh, city staff is there to consult, um, on, on projects or on the meeting. I think that kind of helped clarify since, um, when I, for example, when I joined the Special Events Committee, um, we didn't, I didn't get anything. That outlined that, so I just adding some structure to that, I think really helps keep everything on task and moving forward. And knowing who needs to take action and, um, and so forth, so I, uh, I like that change.
Um, in addition, is there anything that, um, council would like to see? You know, added, uh, to the, to the rules of procedure that was not included in this? And, and the one that we have had in effect for, you know, the past three or so years?
Mike, I have one, um, clarifying question, which is, um, in part, um, D. In Procedure, it talks about an agreed-upon member of the committee taking minutes. Do we think that that should be just anyone, or do we think that that should be a responsibility of, um, city staff sitting in on that? Do we want to make their, make it be some sort of assured? Kind of base level of what minute taking is, or are you comfortable with the way that's set up?
I think the way that it was written was just not to tie anybody down, I suppose. Under the impression that most likely the person who would probably, uh, be tasked with the minutes would probably be a staff member. But yeah, uh, it was just left open as to not be, uh, you know, strict in the event that, um, someone else basically said. Oh, I can't wait to take minutes for these, for these committees, um, so.
Fair enough, no problem.
Yeah, if, if, if you would like to see it, um, you know, that, that be designated to a staff member. Um, that can be, uh, that can be changed.
No, I'm comfortable with the way it is, just want to clarify, thank you.
Um, so I do have some additional questions, so just maybe clarifying or rec, or thoughts or recommendations. So, um, on page six, um, the electronic participation, um, indicates that. Um, we need to notify the presiding officer of their intent to appear by telephone. So in the past, that has been the city administrator, and so I'm wondering, um, if we can add city administrator or presiding officer. Does anybody else have any thought on that? Otherwise, I can keep moving along. Um, under, um, seven, citizen participation. Um, B, manner of addressing the council. Um, it says, speak clearly into the microphone, I think that's subjective. And so, um, the speak clearly portion, and so I would like to strike, um. Uh, how about clearly, how about strike clearly, just speak into the microphone? Um, your definition of clearly may be different than my definition of clearly. Um. Under C, time limit on citizens' remarks. Um, I, I just, I know, having sat at the dais for a number of years. That sometimes we've had to, on more controversial, um, issues, limit it to like two minutes. And so we've really, um, left that to the discretion of, um, the presiding officer to make that decision. And so you've outlined it to say, um, on any subject covered unless additional and time is granted by the presiding officer. Um, I'm wondering if it's, if it's additional or, um, a reduction of. And so, I don't know, unless otherwise. Um, indicated by the presiding officer, so I don't know that we should say additional time, because then, let's just say, unless otherwise. because then let's just say, unless otherwise granted, or however you want to say that, I guess. I don't have a recommendation, but if we need to take time away because we have, you know, 100 people waiting to speak, or if we want to increase it due to needing to hear more on a topic. Does that make sense? Okay. Awesome. On page seven, under council action, abstentions due to conflict of interest. So my notes on that were that if it's determined by any member of the city council that he or she has a conflict of interest on an agenda item, said member shall so declare the nature of their conflict prior to commencement of the discussion of the agenda item. Upon declaration, his or her conflict of interest, the council member shall be excused from the dais, and he or she shall have the right to address the council from the floor. So, so I'm reading this as if they're, have a conflict that they need to be removed from the dais, or am I not understanding that correctly? So they need to leave the dais if they have a conflict of interest, because that's not how it's happened in the past?
Are you under J, Teresa?
I am, or yes, yes, I'm under J.
Okay.
I just wanted to understand the intent of that.
Would you prefer May? Or just did it not even be in there at all?
Well, I, I'm not sure that the person needs to be excused from the dais. In the past, if they've had an issue, they've stated their dissension, or their, their conflict of interest, and then they've just sat there, so.
How about just striking those two, those last two sentences of that paragraph?
That's fine.
Okay.
And then under nine, committees, boards, and commissions, under membership and selection. I just, when we, committees are encouraged to have at least two citizens, and if appropriate, a member of the Chamber of Commerce and/or representatives from any local nonprofit organization. I'm just wondering if that's too prescriptive, and if we wanted to do something more along the lines of, you know, any appropriate, because what if it's not a nonprofit organization? What if it's a for-profit organi-, you know, so I'm just thinking outside of the box, is this just too prescriptive? And do we, you know, at least two citizens, and then a, a, appropriate organization, or, and I don't even know. Something to, you know, with reference to the city or something like that. I don't know, or the community. Otherwise, thank you, Mike. I think that these were well-written. Appreciate your work on them.
I didn't write most of them, but I appreciate your comments.
But you have to put them together, right?
I mean, that's, that's. Yes. Just, so for nine, C, remove not, I, the, the reason that was written was, I mean, more or less for the foundation, you know, what, which was the intent. But I understand, your point is well-taken. So just remove nonprofit. Would that solve the issue, or was it, you still think it might be, okay?
Yeah, I think that any other local organization or, you know, entity, I mean, it could be a business. It might be, depending on what we might need. So I'm, I'm fine with organization, just taking out nonprofit, that probably works.
Mike, I do have a question then. Did, on number five, the agenda be adding items to the agenda? Is this new, or are we turning this into the mayor, or is this how we've always done it to be approved?
This, this language is, has been part of the SOP already. But I think this, this may have been sort of carried over by the original SOP that was in place. Which is, yes, the, the council, if something is being requested to be added to the agenda, you just ask the mayor. And typically, that has never been a problem. And a lot of times, you know, council members will always preemptively say that someone will be their second. I've never had an instance that I recall when, on council, that a second was ever really required. But yes, this has been sort of the way, and I guess Teresa can correct me if I'm wrong, because she's been here much longer than me. It has always been during the time I have been on council.
Thank you.
Here, Erin, there were a number of suggestions for modifications by Ms. Harms. I think that those probably, we couldn't, I don't think it'd be appropriate task for something to be passed with, you know, not exact language, not exactly clarity on what those modifications would be. Is that, is that fair?
I, I would agree, Mayor. I think it'd probably be best to, to, to do new red lines and submit it, just so everybody knows exactly what you're voting on.
Okay, all right. Then, as it would, I think it would be appropr- appropriate for a actual motion to table. If anyone would be willing to withdraw their motions to approve, and then making motion to table, there can be red lines, and it can be presented to council once again, based upon those suggestions.
Happy to remove my motion, and.
Was I the second?
Actually, I have, Susan was the motion, and then Teresa was second.
Okay, well, I removed my motion.
Then would you like to restate your motion to table?
Uh, yes, please. I'll restate to table.
And you'll restate to second, Teresa?
Yes, please.
Roll call.
Susan Skiris?
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Michael Libby?
Yes.
Lauren Campbell?
Yes.
And Teresa Harms?
Yes.
All right, 6C, consideration of committee structures and appointments motion.
Moved.
Second.
All right, on that same discussion point we had about committees, obviously, I think that there has been a discussion about needing to potentially expand or add, encourage greater citizen participation in the committees. And so first off, this is a more comprehensive list than what was provided to you previously. This repoints all of the citizen representatives that were, are currently already on committees, but also makes suggestions about who could be added to, to the committees. And so hoping council will discuss that and provide their, their feedback on those proposed changes.
So Mike, you're saying that these are just suggestions, these are not set in stone, this is exactly what you have to have, like, in the personnel, Personnel and Finance Committee, it has to be a citizen, correct? It, it can be whoever is chosen. It could be a resident, it could be the business owner, it could be the chamber, whoever. Is that kind of what we're going with?
Correct. The, the red items are the only proposed modifications or additions. The things that are in black are citizens and members that already currently exist in their committee form, and the, the current committees, but it's just adopting them, because I don't think the last one actually did that. And now that I see that the communications committee will obviously have to be modified, because Whitney is leaving, but that, that, that's just a, something that can be, that's just one name. So, yes, it is not, these are, the ones in red are just suggestions, potential possibilities presented to you for consideration.
So if we do pass this, then, say, on the Economic Development Committee, then we would have a chamber representative, like, all those in red would now become black. So that's who you want on the Economic Development Committee, correct? Or would that just be, like, it's not set in stone, but, you know, this is kind of a guideline?
Yeah, I think, I think the proposal, speaking specifically about the Economic Development Committee, again, everything in red is just a proposal. But what I, what the, what's being presented to you is that the items in red, so under Economic Development Committee, chamber rep, developer, business rep, two citizens. Presuming that you adopted this in, in this form hypothetically, those people would be at it. It is not just, I, the, the ask is not of you to essentially add one, two, three, four, five different spots to the committee. Although, if you're saying, yeah, let's add five different spots, you know, that's obviously your, your decision. These are just a proposal on what, you know, may be appropriate for the Economic Development Committee.
Thank you.
Mayor, do you mind if I make a comment about having a citizen on the Personnel Committee?
Yeah.
I was concerned, and maybe something that legal can help us with, but just if we have like a serious HR-type issue that we have to address, I'm just wondering how the city's covered in their responsibility, if our, you know, insurance coverage, things like that, would go toward that citizen being on the committee if we were to discuss something in an HR-related matter?
Yeah, Travis, I understand your concerns. I'm not exactly sure what types of confidential personnel matters that might potentially be discussed, but I, I could see an issue with that as well.
I would say during the time that I've been, I've never actually had a discussion about that. Travis, I think, yeah, you raise a good point. I don't believe that is something we have ever, this personnel issues is something that has never actually been discussed at the Personnel and Finance Committee, despite the name. It seems like if those types of things were to be discussed, I don't think that there would be an issue excluding the citizen, Erin? If, if, if one actually is appointed.
Yeah, I think with that appointment, you could have that caveat that there might be matters in which a private citizen would be excluded from the meeting for confidentiality reasons.
Thank you for hearing my concern.
Any other thoughts from council?
Mr. Mayor, I, I certainly do appreciate the expansion on the Economic Development Committee. I think that's a, that's a good move. When I served on that committee years ago, we had a number of people from outside city administration and council that, that sat there, and I, I think that's a positive move. More input is always good. Thank you.
I wanted to add a thought about the Economic Development Committee as well. The chamber rep, earlier, I guess, towards the end of the year, last year, when I met with Pete, who's the current chamber president, I, I suggested that maybe that would be something that the chamber vice president could be appointed to, somebody who's likely a business owner, somebody with some of that Economic Development Committee, or Economic Development experience, where, you know, sometimes our chamber rep is somebody, you know, like, on special events, it makes sense that the role is somebody that can help us plan and execute on events. And so making sure that we're strategic with that invite, I guess, would be my suggestion for the Economic Development Committee.
Thank you, Lauren. And to Susan's point, if, you know, the, if the concern is, you know, we should just expand these committees, but not actually, you know, limit them to being citizens, or being developers, or being business reps, that's, you know, completely within your, your decision-making power.
I guess I completely appreciate you going through and doing this, and putting this down in writing. And I have been asking, along with Joseph, the two of us have been asking to add more people to the Economic Development Committee. So I know, I appreciate that, you know, you're adding people. I just don't want it to be too restrictive. And then, you know, we have to have a citizen on the Communications Committee. Well, what if a citizen doesn't really want to be on it? You know, or if the chamber rep wants to be on the Communications Committee because there's no citizen there? Is that going to lock us into requiring a citizen versus a chamber representative who doesn't live in Windsor Heights? That's my only concern. I hate to just block us in and hold us to this.
All right. So with your comments considered, Susan, I suppose I'd ask the council, if, if these proposed sizes look fine, either consider approving the, what has been suggested as far to the, part of the council packet, or alternatively, just saying that these committees should be expanded to the proposed sizes that has been presented in this packet. So essentially, the Personnel and Finance Committee would have an additional person on it. The Economic Development Committee would have an additional, it's like five people on it, and the Communications Committee would have an additional person on it.
I think part, way, maybe the way to say that, Mike, is maybe, you could say that these may be expanded to include these, that gives some flexibility, but is an requirement.
I'm good with saying it that way, because it kind of leaves it open-ended more than, you know, this is what you have to have.
Erin, does it need to be any modification of the motion based upon what, what council's understanding?
Can you read, Travis, can you read back the original motion?
Sure, it was just a motion to, add a motion by Harms, and a second by Skiris to discuss the committee assignments or committee structures. That's all I have.
Okay, well, then I, I would recommend that the motion approve the recommendation of adding additional members. Or that they may, may add additional members as presented in the materials.
With the understanding that the, the, what was presented, the materials was specific people, and the motion is actually just for people may be added, and it, but it does not have to be those specific individuals listed in the materials.
Correct.
That wasn't.
Clear as mud for everyone.
I think everyone understands, I hope, anyway.
Travis, you get to write that down.
I know, I'm, 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 I'm going, I'm going with motion to approve, but may add additional members as presented in the materials. I'm using, I'm really sticking to May there. Was that too restrictive?
I don't think so. It sounds good to me, Travis.
Okay, I'll, I'll go with that. Okay, I'll, I'll go with that. All right. I had a motion on the table from harms and a second from Joseph Jones.
The, the amended one or the original one?
Oh, I didn't know we were amending.
Yes, to the amended. I'll, I'll make that motion. Thank you.
Would you second that, Susan?
Did I second it or did Joseph?
Oh, Joseph, I'm sorry, Joseph.
Yeah, I would.
Okay.
Perfect. Thank you. Roll call.
Susan Skiris.
Yes.
Joseph Jones.
Yes.
Michael Libby.
Yes.
Lauren Campbell.
Yes.
And Teresa Harms.
Yes.
Item six B, or I'm sorry, I, item six D, consideration of site management services bids. Motion.
So moved.
Second.
Dalton, did you want to present on this or leave, leave what was presented in the Council Packet?
Yeah. So this is something that we've talked about at the Public Works Committee for probably a year and a half or so. So back in March of 2021, I had a employee take a position with another agency in the area. And instead of backfilling the position immediately, we did bid out site management services last spring. Site management services includes mowing, irrigation maintenance, weeding, pruning, tree trimming, emptying trash cans, picking up garbage, I mean, pretty much the whole kit and caboodle. Did not get interest in it last spring because it was a little late in the season to be bidding it out. And so the contractors that I spoke with recommended some tweaks to the request for bids and to redistribute in September, which I did. In September, I only got one bid. And didn't feel it was wise to move forward with making an award with only one bid. And so we rebid it again back in January and the prices came in anywhere from about $60,000 to $183,000. The bid at $60,000. The, the site management services portion of it, which is everything except for mowing. The contractor claims that they could get it done for $4,000 a year. And I, I just have some serious doubts about that. And so I think that if, first off, if we were to go with that one, we'd be opening the door to Change Order City. And I don't think anybody wants that. And then second off, after going through all this with the Public Works Committee, even the $60,000, if it was more evenly split between mowing and site management services and landscaping is still a bit more, I think, than the city. Then the, the Public Works Committee recommends taking on. And so the recommendation is to not make an award on this contract. Probably asking like, well, if you're maybe recommending, we don't make an award, why are you bringing this to us? And it's, it's pretty much so I can say, hey, I brought you guys the information. I can, I can definitely anticipate the conversation where it says, uh, well, of course Dalton's recommended, we don't get rid of this service because it's job security. And that's absolutely not my intent. Want to make sure we're delivering high level of service at a good price point. So all that being said, there is a staff report in the packet. It's been through the Public Works Committee and the, the notes from that are in there as well.
So Dalton, Mr. Jones, if I may.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I was going to say discussion from Council.
Okay, thank you. I didn't see you. So I, I just went ahead. But, um, so I did look at this and you're exactly right. My first thought was, why are you bringing this if that's your recommendation? So I see your annual cost for employment. So is this in, um, this would be replacing then the staff person. So is that going to be the next recommendation? Is, I mean, what is your, how are we going to make sure that these things are done? And is, is that what you're thinking at this juncture is that we'll just fill the, the staff person? And then is this dollar figure that we have in here consistent with what we currently have, one budgeted, two in the salary chart for staffing? So help me understand that.
Yeah. So you're right. Next step would be to advertise the position and, and backfill it. And to answer your question, yeah, all those, all those items are accounted for. And the budget that Rochelle went over with you, so like wages, benefits, FICA, that's all, that's all in the budget. And it was actually in the budget for this current year that we're in as well. So it's all, it's all accounted for.
And then is the annual pay, is that that you've got a $41,000? So is that what we currently have for like a starting person that has no experience? Is that the median? Is that the high end? Where does that fall in our salary charting?
Yeah, the $20 an hour is, um, it's the starting wage for basically no experience. Now, obviously if we get somebody and it's a competitive application process, we get somebody comes through and they, they've got immense experience and they're an outstanding candidate. Try discussion that I would have to have with Rochelle and Dennis on how best to move forward. But yeah, the $20 an hour is our entry wage.
And that's even with, I'm sorry for all the questions. I mean, the job market that we're in today, I mean, and then how likely is it that we can, you know, with all the workforce shortages, I'm, I'm, I'm just really trying to be realistic and honest. I mean, there's 20, I mean, you could make $20 a target right now. So just curious.
Yeah, no, I, I share your, um, I share the concerns as well. I've, I've had pretty good luck filling previous positions that were opened up by aggressively recruiting folks. So I got one guy, um, there was a sewer issue over at Bebops and I went out there and I was working with him on a Friday night. It was like, hey, man, I had a job open right now. I would love it if you applied. Uh, and he has been amazing. So I, I anticipate taking that approach. Um, and then having my current employees reach out to their friends or make referrals. So I think it's going to be hard to fill it, but I think we can. That $20 an hour, I set that 2019, uh, when we adjusted wages for the public works employees. Uh, the starting wage back in 2018 was $17.05 an hour. And we were not getting interest at that rate. So we increased it to 20. We haven't had issues since then. But obviously we don't have, we don't have positions opening up frequently. So.
We also don't have, I don't know what, I don't think you probably have anybody at $20 right now on your payroll, do you?
I have, uh, they're not too far from that.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just, I'm just, I want to be realistic about this budget request and where we are in light of kind of all the factors that are, that were in challenges that we're facing right now. So thank you.
Yeah. Yep. Yeah. I've got three guys that are not much higher than $20 an hour. And I think that I know for a fact, because I kind of did a post, post, post op on my bids, asking contractors like, what in the world, what drove these prices up? Uh, availability of materials and availability of labor is why the contract bids came in so high.
So Dalton, are we no longer looking into seasonal help? Is that something that you're not looking into and you're just going right to full-time?
Oh, no. Well, uh, I've had a seasonal position posted and I, I just stopped taking it down because I could use the help whenever I can get it. For the most part, I mean, I don't know if I'd hire him to work right now, but to answer your question, we are hiring seasonals again, um, just like we have in years past. So this is, this isn't creating a new position. This is backfilling a position that's been vacant for about 11 months.
Michael, Joseph, Lauren?
I'm good.
Okay.
I'm good as well. I sat on that committee and we, we talked about this for some time. So.
So essentially the, um, the, the approval or the, the motion is to not proceed with the bid award for these services.
Correct.
Correct, Dalton. Okay. Well, hearing no further discussion, roll call.
Susan Skiris.
Yes.
Joseph Jones.
Yes.
Michael Libby.
Yes.
Lauren Campbell.
Yes.
And Teresa Harms.
Yes, sorry, I was unmuted.
Six E, consideration of park improvement grants. Dalton, is this one yours as well?
This is, so I combined them into, or I had Travis combine these into one agenda item because they're pretty much the same thing. Uh, where there's items that are duplicative, like budget and schedules and all that, we just included one copy with the packet. But these grant applications are to the Wellmark Foundation and Prairie Meadows Foundation for the Large Match Grant and the Community Betterment Grant. One of them is for $99,999 and the other ones for $100,000. I wanted to bring these to you guys for approval before I submit them. It's a total of $200,000 in funding for, uh, for a, I can't remember what the total price tag on it was. A playground and a tennis court project. So if the city were to receive funds on this, we'd be obligating the remaining balance of those projects. Um, I got a letter of support from the Windsor Heights Foundation for each of these applications and they're supportive of the projects. I have not approached them and asked them for money on it yet because I didn't want to have them committing money before you guys were all kind of on board. And I wanted there to be a conversation about the budget and CIP before we start talking about committing 500, $750,000 to parks projects. So, um, if you decide to not submit for these grants, that's fine. Just the projects won't be completed this year. The Public Works Committee in discussing the CIP has recommended stripping all funding away from essentially quality of life projects and redirecting the funds to 68th Street between Timmons and Hickman. I told them all that the Council pretty clearly said that that was not the direction you were wanting to go when you talked about this last and that you kind of wanted to balance some quality of life projects in there as well. Uh, and that their, their recommendation kind of stuck. Mike, if I'm misrepresenting that, please chime in. So with that, I guess just need to know if you want to do parks projects, if we were able to get some, some grant funding out of it.
Mr. Mayor, are you looking for a motion?
Well, real quick, Dalton. Okay. Yes, motion.
I would move that we would move forward with the, uh, with the two grant proposals. That's my motion.
I, I had a couple of questions. If, sorry, I wasn't able to get in there before your motion, Michael. Um, so just real, real quick, Dalton, what, so it says the local match, that would include anything that the foundation would contribute to. So it's not necessarily the city matches, it's local match, right? Is that what I'm to understand?
Yeah, just be basically the balance of the projects.
And have we applied for grants like, uh, are these specific grants before? Do, do we know the likelihood of, of being awarded the grant? Is, do you have any other, I guess, information from experience that you could share?
Yeah, I, so I talked to the Wellmark Foundation last year in preparation for the last grant submittal. I don't want to say it's kind of a shot in the dark, but the Wellmark Foundation one I know is, is particularly competitive. So I wouldn't say it's, I would say it's, um, not super likely. And then this year in preparation for this submittal, I called up the Prairie Meadows Foundation and asked, um, there's two grant programs they have. One of them's up to $100,000 and then that, the, the other one's over $100,000. So I was actually going to go for the larger one and the project just isn't regional enough in scope to go for more money. And so they advised that we go for a smaller one. So, um, we have received money from, from Prairie Meadows in the past. So they helped pay for the Harmony Park stuff. They helped pay for resurfacing the North Walnut Creek Trail. Uh, I think the chief's got some, uh, police equipment from them before. So, uh, the money he's got to stay here in central Iowa, whereas the Wellmark grant, Wellmark grants, that's like a, it's like a regional Midwest type of thing. So it's super competitive, but I think that, I think we actually have a decent chance at both.
Okay. Thank you for providing the context.
Sure.
So Dalton, I, I do have a question. I guess I'm, I sat through the Public Works Committee meeting because I'm on the, the committee. And it was basically said, you know, by the residents that we need to work on our, our roads. Especially because we don't know the flood mitigation. So we're going to redo a tennis court and add playground stuff in without knowing anything that we're doing with flood mitigation. So in all honesty, we could have to pick everything up and move it or change whatever may be put down, placed. So for me, I stick behind what the Public Works Committee suggested. And I think that we need to wait until the flood mitigation is all figured out. Otherwise I feel as if, if I approve this or say yes, then I'm just, I'm gambling with throwing taxpayer money out the, the window. If flood mitigation comes back and things are changed. I, I understand the tennis courts needs it, need it. I understand the playground could be improved. But again, I just don't want to spend money to spend money when we should be thinking ahead to flood mitigation plans.
Sure, totally agree. And maybe, maybe some more substance will come from that. And the next item on the agenda, which is kind of next steps, but I mean, I, I, if I'm going to be honest, I don't see a scenario where the tennis courts or the playground just like stop being in their current location, um, regardless of what we do with the flood stuff. Not saying it's like an impossibility, but, um, I just don't want to kind of get like paralysis from the flood stuff, you know? But I, I agree with you, Susan, because the, the Public Works Committee was, I mean, they're clear as water. They want streets and flood stuff, disregard all parks. But, um, I want to make sure that you guys are all on board with that before I, I just start kind of glossing over some of these grant applications.
And it wasn't as if they don't want the quality of life stuff like the playground. But, you know, prioritizing, we only have so much money to go around. And, um, we, 68th Street wasn't even like, from my understanding, when I came into Public Works Committee, 68th Street wasn't even on their radar. They weren't even discussing it until my first meeting. And then, you know, the second meeting, it kind of went a little bit further into depth on 68th Street. So, um, I, I don't think that they are against like the quality of life aspect of things, but I think that we need to really work on our streets and not get too overdrawn on what we're doing. So that's just kind of what I took from, um, the Public Works Committee meetings.
Yeah. And the, I mean, the, the wording that I remember them using was strip all funding from the quality of life improvement projects, specifically park stuff and put it towards streets and flood stuff. So, I mean, it is important to them, but, um, the impression that I got from the committee is that park stuff may, may wait for a decade, decade or more, you know? There's never going to be a, a town that doesn't have streets that need to get redone.
I don't think that they were thinking forecasted out 10 years that we wouldn't do anything in the park for 10 years. You know, but I do think that they were very adamant about the streets that need to be done. So.
Hey Travis, real quick, I think, uh, this moved into discussion without me asking for a motion in a second. Is that right?
Well, uh, Mr. Libby, I made a motion, but if you noticed, I broke out the item based on the two resolutions, um, that are, were presented in the packet to go forward with the grant. So I don't know what, how you want to handle that, Mayor.
Okay. If we want, if you want to discuss the flood reduction aspect of this, before discussing the consideration of these, these items, we can do that. That would make people more comfortable. That would make people more comfortable.
I think it would make logical sense.
Okay, Michael, then. I'm sorry. Okay. Then move, we'll move to F. That being discussed next steps for the flood reduction and resiliency analysis, and we will come back to E then. So the next steps for flood reduction. That is just a discussion, so I don't believe we need a motion on it, but Dalton, I assume you are speaking to this.
Yes, I am. Thank you. Included in the packet is the technical, technical report memo summarizing the findings process and outcomes of the JEO study. Pretty much everything in that report is basically out of that, that GIS story map put into a PDF format that we'll be able to use to apply for grants and share with partner organizations in the future. The only thing that's different is the inclusion of what's called the Findlay Basin up in Grimes. And I believe I made reference to this, but Grimes is looking at doing a big detention basin, like a regional park. And so we had JEO study the flood mitigation benefit of the Findlay Basin as part of their analysis. They found that it's beneficial, but not near as beneficial as the like cost effective as the other four items that are listed there under recommendation. So the recommendation is that we pursue the community rating system, stormwater management, which is basically what we're already doing. Further scope out the channel modification project and then explore retrofitting structures on North Walnut Creek. And towards the end of that PDF, there is that table that puts together all the costs and benefits into one spot. So it's easier to reference. Page one seventy-seven of the packet.
So Dalton, are you looking for direction?
Yeah, I guess kind of just need to know what what rabbit hole I need to stick my head down, because what funding we go for is going to depend on what direction you guys want to go. And there's going to be significant time and cost associated with exploring these options.
All right, well, your recommendation or staff's recommendation is made on one thirty-three. Those four things in order. Counsel, what are your thoughts on that?
Oh, go ahead, Joseph.
Dalton, please go ahead.
No, I was just going to ask a question. Did these recommendations also come from the committee, the Public Safety Committee or Public Works Committee?
The Public Works Committee on page one one seventy-seven. These are so there's a column brought forward for further FEMA BCA analysis. That's where the Public Works Committee kind of guided this process. So the items that have a yes in a green box are what the Public Works Committee recommended we look into further. And so they did. And that last column on the right is, it reflects kind of the findings after they looked into it a little bit more.
Okay, so your recommendations, were they approved or not approved from the Public Safety, Public Works Committee?
Mike, did this go to the committee? As it's currently written here?
Yeah, I would have to go because we talked about it last year. We had spoken about, you know, what what things should be prioritized as far as the proposals from the
So the direction from counsel on December sixth, when JEO gave their presentation was to have a work session or an agenda item to talk about specifically what to take it or what to go for next. So I guess to answer your question, no, it has not been back to the Public Works Committee since the council saw it. We can, if you want to, but back in December.
I'm trying to figure out, I just want to know where all the buy-in is at this juncture. So just yes, no, what did it happen? Yes or no? That was good enough. Thank you. Sorry, Joseph.
No problem. Appreciate the the question. I was going to say that I since we've gone through this in a couple of iterations of council now, talking about what needed to be done, what needed to be studied. I think based on looking at the hood wall and the retrofitting and what we know about what we can do to address Walnut Creek and to prevent mitigates, slow down, somehow modify its flooding. I think addressing that as it's been stated here is probably a really high priority of getting done. I think the recommendations on one thirty-three makes sense. And I would, I would personally recommend that we move forward with these these four. Knowing that once we figure this part out and hopefully understand what other people are doing upstream from us, it'll help us to decide what we want to do with things within Kobe Park. But I could also kind of catch that in saying that one of the things that I think we should discuss on a larger scale and maybe not this evening is we might have to accept this piece of property that we own will just have some flooding in some places and we're going to have to budget for, you know, every, you know, somewhere every five to 10 years, we might have to redo our you know, playground or we may have to redo our tennis court because of where it is. And we just set aside the money to to do that and know proactively that that's going to be something that's going to be done. I don't want us to to get to a point where we are only doing streets and roads for for many, many years. I know there still needs to be quality of life things going on. But our our council as set in twenty twenty-two is doing a really good job, I think, of addressing many decades of waiting to do some roads and streets. And so we are, I think, in my opinion, being more proactive toward that sort of work than many other iterations of council have been. And I think that we all have committed to doing that going forward, but I don't want us to be just roads and sewers. As a council, I want us to to remember to do the things that, you know, make people also enjoy time in the city. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Lauren, Mike?
I would concur with Joseph. You know, quality of life issues for people coming to Windsor Heights to live is really critical. I was struck by the census numbers in the report indicating the age level of individuals, childbearing years and whatnot. Seems to be going down, which is a good sign for the future of our community. And so I, that that's why I I think that these quality of life issues are drastically important for for the future. I recognize streets and roads and they're always going to need as well as a sewer is going to need work. And that's just an ongoing thing. And perhaps we're paying the piper because in past years, we had not taken a strong look at that and let some things decay. But if we do have the ability to reach out and get some funds for quality of life opportunities, I think that that would be germane to this discussion. And so so I would, I would agree with Joseph that we can't put all of our eggs in one basket, so to speak. Thank you.
I just had a quick question for Dalton. Sorry, I feel like I just keep bringing more and more questions. If you could remind me, I'm looking at one seventy-seven and the channel modification. Is that the one that the engineer said had potential flood risk or increased flood risk, I should say, for three E? And and that piece of property and how do we? How do we balance all of that?
So the channel modification would not increase flood risk for three E, but it would slightly increase flood risk downstream, south of sixty-third street. There's ways that they can, I think, design that project to mitigate the downstream risk. I think what you're thinking of with the increased risk of three E where the levy, the levy alignments. So like any levier flood wall we put up is going to increase flooding on seventy-third street and three E.
Thank you. I appreciate that clarification. I remember one other proposals did, but I couldn't remember which one. So thank you.
Just as a bit of perspective, these were discussed at Public Works last year back in November, I believe before it was presented to council. Questions about, you know, what of the projects listed or discussed warranted more investigation? The CRS, I believe the stormwater management and the channel improvements all unanimously were yeses that they warranted more investigation. The retrofitting of property was no, two to four. And this was obviously the last committee, but those were that was the thoughts of the committee as far as whether or not these things warranted more discussion or consideration. So just providing that perspective. I'm sorry, Teresa, please go ahead.
Oh, no, I was just going to say I would concur that you need to have balance. And I think that's one of the things that, as Joseph said, many of the future councils have found themselves in going, you know, one far, you know, right or far left. No political pun intended in that statement at all, but just, you know, letting the pendulum swing far on one project or another. And I think that that's where we have tried to do a little bit more balance. And if we can can do that and in a financially responsible way, I think that makes a lot of sense. Obviously, I support the the parks projects and have brought many of those ideas to the table because I believe in them. And I think that those are all things, quality of life initiatives that will make our community more attractive. And there are things that people want to come to our community for. We we know we've seen that before and we see that in our special events and and just Kobe Park in and of itself. I love going down there and seeing people that don't live in our community who come and you ask them, oh, where are you from? And you find out that they're they're from outside of our community. So and so I think that there definitely needs to be balance in that. And we can't forget about that important. So I would support some doing some of these projects and making sure that they are continuing, continue to be built out in our CIP to recognize that you know, we need to keep up with that and not ignore them as as has been of most recent, as we really try to take a big giant step and addressing are the infrastructure in our community that is is out of that's, that's in a bad place. So I would just also say that and no disrespect, because I really appreciate all of the work of the Public Works Community and or Committee and all the work that they do and their expertise. But that is their area of expertise and they are believing in fixing. And so if we had to put up a community improvement committee up against them, they might have a different opinion. So we have to remember that we have to take everybody's opinion and needs of this community into consideration as we're making these budgetary decisions. So as that's all I'll say. Thank you.
So Dalton, if I'm doing my math correctly, which bear with me, I could be totally off on my math because I'm trying to do it on the fly here without using a calculator. So and my fingers don't go that high. So if we do all four of those recommendations, we're looking at ten million, seven hundred thousand six or seven hundred six thousand dollars to twelve million, eight hundred and ten thousand dollars in price. Where are we finding this money? Where are we getting all of this money to complete this, these projects? I mean, I totally get like stormwater management. I think the CRS, stormwater management, I think that's a no brainer, you know, just because I mean, it's just a no brainer and hopefully it will just help out our citizens as well. But the other stuff, I'm just, I am very worried about the money, like do you have a money tree that I don't know of? Because if so, please tell me where the location is.
I got, even better, I got Rochelle. No, I I share the same concerns. So there is a lot of, for example, one grant that I plan on going for, I just need to know what I'm going for with this grant. It's called Building Resiliency Through Infra Brick. Building resilient infrastructures in communities and it's through FEMA. It's a seventy-five percent fed allocation. And so the city be required to come up with twenty-five percent. So I'm thinking specifically on the channel modifications because I see that impacting like the biggest number of Windsor Heights taxpayers. On that project, there's going to be a real hard benefit to the city of West Des Moines and the city of Des Moines. And so if that's the route that you guys want to go, I think that what we first need to do is identify, kind of like what we did here for Windsor Heights Structures, is realize, identify like what the specific benefit is for some of the Des Moines and West Des Moines structures. So we can reach out to them and say, hey, here's an opportunity. If we all three win it on this together, I can almost guarantee we'd get FEMA funding. And we'd lower the twenty-five percent match, split it between three communities. You're talking, you just took a twelve million dollar project and just made it a million bucks. So there's opportunities out there. That's kind of why we're talking about it today is different grants for different kinds of projects. So if what we wanted to do is like a green infrastructure approach to it, it's like a totally different ballgame. If what we wanted to do is flood walls and gates and stuff, again, like totally different arm of the federal government, you're talking like Army Corps of Engineers and so, yeah, I guess to answer your question, tons of grant funding because we can't obviously afford a twelve million dollar flood project on our own.
And what are our chances of receiving this FEMA seventy-five percent, twenty-five percent option? And if we don't receive that grant, then what do we do?
I would just keep applying for it. And what are the chances? It's competitive. I mean, it's a federal grant, so everybody across the country is going for it. Fortunately, there is a lot of money out there in infrastructure right now. So yeah. I mean, it's going to be very competitive. I just want to make sure like I'm setting clear expectations to by saying Dalton, go and pursue these four projects. Work. I can have the community rating system and the stormwater management stuff done. I can have that done in the next six months. No big deal. On the the retrofitting and the channel modifications, you you won't see a shovel in the ground. I'd be willing to bet for five years. Because we got to do a scoping project. So like, there's all these boxes we got to check to get federal funding. One of them is a very specific scoping project that lays out these parameters. After your scoping project and you got to do a thirty percent design, then you got to send the plans through for federal review. And so it's it's like a it's a really long process. So we won't be, we won't be digging on anything for, I bet you, five years.
I think that's an important point because we we need to start planning now for even being able to get started three council generations from now in terms of getting things set up and getting ready to get on the road because the infrastructure dollars plus applying for federal grants means that it's multiple years of waiting before you get started to go through all the hoops.
So Dalton, also, what you're saying is if we don't get that FEMA seventy-five percent, twenty-five percent fiscal year twenty-three, then we're not going to continue with the the channel modifications until next year fiscal year twenty-four, where we can apply again. Is that correct? Or if we don't receive it fiscal year twenty-three, then then we try to find Then we try to find twelve million or, you know, like what, what is your thoughts there?
I mean, if I was the one making the decision, which I'm not, it's all you guys. If I was the one making the decision. And you said, all right, you didn't get the grant. Looks like you got to do the project at a twelve million dollar cost of the city. I'd say, don't do it. It's just, that's literally all of your bonding capacity. So any hopes and dreams you have for the city would be wrapped up in that channel project for the next decade. So. Representative Axon's office has been great about sending out information about all this infrastructure funding. So they sent out a five hundred and sixty page PDF with. There's like forty or fifty different grants in that PDF. I'm seeing, Theresa, you got that? So the brick funding is specifically called out in that. There's called RAISE Funding, R A I S E. I mean, there's like, there's a whole bunch of different programs we can go for. Again, the the goal tonight is to identify which project we want to pursue. So I know which grants to go after and kind of how to eat this elephant.
And I just want to be very clear. If we do approve this recommendation, we're not locked into it.
Well, there's no, you're not asking to be, you're not asking, there's no ask for any sort of approval. I think it's more of a direction. Thing that to even try for these things. Is that fair, Dalton? I mean, we. We've worked on the study. We've talked about it for, you know, a long time. And now staff is coming and saying, please just point us in the direction now that you have this information so that we even know where to start. Is that, is that fair?
Yes, yep. Yeah, it's a good way to put it.
Okay.
So this isn't asking you to spend any money tonight. This isn't locking you to any project or acquiring any local match. I just need to know what, before I start going down these roads and. I just want to make sure we're all on the same page, rowing in the same direction.
So the four recommendations are for CRS stormwater management, channel modifications and retrofitting. That is why you, staffs ask is that they get direction from council to. Schedule and pursue funding opportunities for the following projects. Is anybody opposed to the staff's recommendation?
After further conversation and review, I think that they they make sense. They're consistent with, I think, what the recommendations were as well and the materials provided. And I, and I would again echo the now is the time, I think, particularly with federal infrastructure funding available. That if we're going to get some help outside of our community, then we need to probably, we need, we need to participate because everybody else is too. Yes, it's going to be highly competitive, but there's going to be hopefully not only some state specific dollars that we might be able to consider, but also. Some lots of federal grants, grants as well. So I definitely think we need to make sure that we are at the table making application for those to see what kind of dollars we can bring in. Now is the time.
If no further discussion or comments, Dalton, I think that. What I'm hearing is that the council is directing you to follow through with the recommendations.
Awesome. That's what I need.
Going back then. To six E, consideration of park improvement grants. I will do it correctly this time. Motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Opening this discussion up again. As far as the the approval of the grants were. Grant applications for that matter.
So Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Please.
So the four recommendations that you guys just gave me for projects to pursue, none of those four would alter the footprint. Of Colby Parks. We're not talking about putting a levy through the area. We're not talking about. Drudging it out, making it a big detention basin. So. As far as like the long term viability of these projects being there, they're going to flood, is there in the flood plain? But I don't know if we need to necessarily worry about tearing them out as part of a future flood project. But like Joseph said, just plan on them flooding. So that being said, if it's something you guys are interested in, I could submit these grants. We can. We can keep an eye on opportunities for other grant funding as they arise.
Interestingly enough, there's a piece of, another piece of legislation in the State House this year, it came up last year and. I am not confident that it'll, it'll pass, but just to give you an idea that the legislature is also thinking that they need to maybe make some appropriations to help communities out with. Quality of life struck particularly parks and that sort of thing. So it's good to see other folks talking about the need to ensure that there are resources available to help out communities. And so I, as I think we've made our point before, whatever grant opportunities there are. Or if we need to do some sort of fundraising campaign, I know that that was done by the foundation for. The Harmony Parks component. So maybe that's a consideration as well. Maybe I don't know if it would be the Budget Committee or Public Works or whomever to. Put together maybe a plan on the funding component of this and maybe how we might move forward. With making sure we can meet the the financial obligations. If we secure the grants and move forward in that space, knowing that we still need to get, you know, around a million or identify, you know, upward or potentially a million dollars to. To go towards, you know, park improvement. So something for us to think about probably sooner rather than later.
Yeah. And so I've actually talked to Rochelle. Rochelle, you're still on there, aren't you? Yeah. So I've talked to Rochelle about funding these projects with the local match and there is. I mean, just on that. In the budget sheet that she went through with all those future, like the future road projects in that table. I mean, there is quite a bit of money that's just kind of, I don't want to say it's sitting around, but it's not exactly scheduled yet. So. And we'll get funding determinations on these grants. One of them we'll know in. March and then the other one will know on July first. So.
The other thing that I would recommend we do is we have. Ongoing funding for, you know, police and fire and what have you. And if we need to add a specific line for park maintenance and that sort of thing, and I don't know where we are with that, but.
To Ms. Harms' point, which I think she may have have raised earlier, obviously, the Public Works Committee may say. You know, we should only spend money on parks. Or I'm sorry, we should only spend money on roads. You know, the Community Events Committee might say something different. Ultimately, it's your, it's the council's choice as to where that money goes and how it's spent, what you, what should be applied for. So is there any further discussion? Before taking roll call on this and Travis to clarify, does there need to be one or two?
Well, actually, now that we have it, why don't we? We'll do. Motion to approve the part grants. Then we'll do separate motions for each of the resolutions that are embedded within. That item. Does that make sense, Aaron?
I I definitely agree that we should have a separate motion for each resolution. You're asking for. I'm not sure if third one's necessary.
So we don't need the third. Okay.
But I, yeah, I would, I would recommend because there's two, two formal resolutions to have votes on on each of them separately.
Then what was the original ask for?
The original, I have a motion by Libby, second by harms to. If they want to amend their motion to approve resolution twenty twenty two dash ten. We can go that route. Campbell, I mean, I'm sorry.
Yes. So I, I think Lauren made the most nice second, right?
Yeah, exactly.
What Travis said to do.
Do we do, is it, is it cleared up, Travis?
Yeah, it's cleared up. I'm ready.
Okay. Is there a council, any further discussion on twenty two ten? Hearing non-roll call.
Susan Skerries.
No.
Joseph Jones.
Yes.
Michael Libby.
Yes.
Lauren Campbell.
Yes.
And Teresa Harms.
Yes.
All right, consideration of resolution number twenty twenty two eleven, a resolution authorizing an application to Prairie Meadows for a community betterment grant. Motion.
Second.
Further discussion from council. Hearing non-roll call.
Susan Skerries.
No.
Joseph Jones.
Yes.
Michael Libby.
Yes.
Lauren Campbell.
Yes.
And Teresa Harms.
Yes.
All right, item seven A reports. Based upon the conversation that we had tonight, if anybody has any recommendations for citizens to fill the committee positions, please pass them on. I would appreciate it. I have spoken a little bit with Lauren. About trying to centralize information for for committees. And I asked Travis, he has control over Dropbox. I think it might be a good idea to explore. If possible, making some sort of drive or making some sort of Dropbox accessible to each committee. That way there could be a sort of an archive as to where information is kept. So year after year, we don't have different information going back and forth. It's sort of kept in one central place. There will be. Mid Iowa Association of Local Governments meeting tomorrow, roundtable on affordable housing. Special events, mental health and managing growth. That is all from me. Ms. Harms. You're muted.
Sorry about that. Okay, real quick, Mac Metro advisory council met this morning. We had an update from Dart on their legislative council or excuse me, their legislative agenda, which would allow them to have a local option. Hotel motel tax to be specified for transit. And so that has, was an issue they brought to the legislature last year. They made progress and got it through the Senate. It didn't go anywhere in the House. And so they're continuing to try to make strides that way. If that would pass, actually would require for all the funding to go towards tax, property tax relief. And so if it passed, then we would be able to potentially reduce our levy for. For transit, our transit levy. So that is in the works and we certainly won't know anything until the legislature gets closer to adjournment on on that issue in particular. We also got an update from the League of Cities on two specific pieces of legislation. One was the Senate Tax Bill, which we already talked about tonight and I gave an update. I'm happy to answer any questions if I can be helpful. And then the the second one was hit too far too close to home. It is access to right away. And what the bill would do would not require utility companies to use our conduit lines. But basically kind of let them do whatever they wanted within our right away to put specific to broadband in particular. And so. Are the concerns and problems that that were brought up by several communities. Were similar to that, that we had with not only Mid American and Century Link this last year when we were doing our construction projects. And so a lot of mayors expressed some concern about this legislation. I know the league is specifically working on an amendment and have requested some changes to this. The bill does seem to be rolling quickly through the legislature and it's supported by the larger utility companies like MediaCom and others who. Want to be able to do their own thing within our right away. So just know that those pieces of legislation are out there, they're moving. And if hopefully everybody's getting the league's legislative update. If you're not, it's something you can, you can get access to and it's emailed to you weekly. So it's a great source of information. I'd encourage you to take a look at that. Second, the Water Trails Board meeting was also this morning and they were successful in securing. The governor gave them some American Rescue Plan dollars to commit to the, to the trails funding for the Water Trails funding. So that was great. And there we're starting to have a more regular schedule moving forward. So looking forward to that. And I sent that email update around to everybody. So if you have any questions. Certainly let me know. And then I think we have a budget committee meeting later this week. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Campbell.
I got the chance to attend my first Dart meeting as an alternate on the first and they're like us, working on their budget and scheduling public hearings for that. They're moving forward with more of the art shelters. So we'll continue to see those pop up around the city. And it was great that, or I should say around the metro. And the example that they used for the future of bus stops was a picture of our bus stop. Location near Walmart Sam's Club parking lot. So it was nice that that our location was featured. And the Dart fleet, they've had their electric buses in service for a year now and they're looking at additional manufacturers as well as visiting Champagne Urbana to learn about their hydrogen bus fleet. And I, I learned that diesel averages fourteen, or I'm sorry, four point nine miles per gallon and electric is thirteen cents a mile. So it's exciting to see them continue to make progress on electric buses. And then also the Special Events Committee met last week, but I don't want to steal all of Susan's thunder because she accepted my nomination to be the Chair of our committee. And is also leading the first project, which is movies in the park. And we've set a goal to schedule this year's events in the next month or so, so that we can begin planning the entire year and make sure that residents can. Put events on their calendars early and I'll let Susan speak to all of those updates. That's it for me.
Thank you, Mr. Libby.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Not a whole lot to report other than I want to say thank you, sir, to. For for moving the city council meeting to tonight versus last night, as you know, last night were. Many people were meeting for the twenty twenty two off year caucus. So I certainly did appreciate that. We had a. I had a relatively long meeting with Dennis last week. We were talking about a whole host of things. But I'm really anxious to hear about the Special Events Committee because that was. Part of the discussion about what can we do here in Windsor Heights to be more. To bring more people to our community for all kinds of things. Whether it be movies in the park or whether it be nights in the heights or perhaps something that we tried in the chamber to maybe resurrect a town center. For a kind of a street dance kind of a deal, getting those people involved. So anyway, there's just lots of different things going on and I appreciated that hour that I had a chance to sit with our city administrator. I did take part, of course, in the Public Works Committee. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for putting me on that. And it was a lively discussion about a whole host of things. And I think that we came to the right decision with regard to Dalton's non-request to bid those services out. I will say, just on a personal level, I've really enjoyed getting to know you all better, even though we've been friends and acquaintances for years. I would hope that perhaps you get an opportunity to visit Joe Tripp's place, a little brother, which is where old Baru sixty six was. Because my bride and I were there the other day and had an opportunity to chat with Joe. And it really is a transfer, they've transformed the entire place. And so if you get a chance, go ahead and say hi and tell them you're on the city council and make them all feel welcome. That's all I have, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Nothing to report with the exception of thanking Lauren for covering the Dart meeting. And as you can tell, she covered it quite thoroughly.
Thank you, Ms. Skerries. Thank you, Ms. Skerries.
Okay, I apologize if the dog starts barking. I'm, I'm trying to work hard to keep her quiet, but it's, it's, uh, not, it's a never-ending battle with her right now. Um, on the twenty-seventh of January, I attended the Des Moines Partnership Dinner, uh, with the Windsor Heights Chamber Board members and members. They made the big announcement at the partnership dinner that Des Moines will have a USL championship soccer team. Who are set to take the field in twenty twenty-four. Um, if you're not a follower of soccer, to put it in perspective, uh, this is one tier below major league soccer. If that clears anything up for you. I'm sure that you probably saw this on the announcements in social media or on the news. Uh, Mia Hamm was the keynote speaker. She was great to listen to. She really talked about work ethic and going the extra step to help make her teammates as well as herself better. It was a really enjoyable week or evening. Then on Wednesday, I attended the Metro Waste Executive Finance Committee meeting. Uh, there was some really boring stuff that was talked about, but some exciting news is that Metro Waste has been partnering with an Afghan. Uh, refugee program here in Des Moines to hire Afghan employees. Leslie with Metro Waste said, and I believe it was eight refugees came in two weeks ago on a Friday to see what, what work was like. At the new facility in Grinds and six of them came back to work on Monday. Now, to be very fair, the two that didn't return. It could be because they have motion sickness or something along those lines because I know I couldn't work there due to my motion sickness. Um, the refugees are very excited to be here in Iowa and working at Metro Waste. There's been some obstacles such as one of the. Um, only one of the six refugees speak English. So a translator has been able to come. And translate for them so far. So it makes the training a little easier. Transportation has also been, um, an issue. Uh, even Michael McCoy's, the executive director, he's had his wife transporting the refugees to and from work some of these days. So Metro Waste is looking at ways to remove the obstacles. Um, so that, um. You know, it's a seamless, to make this all as seamless as they can for the refugees. I think that this story will be promoted, uh, later on in the month or next month via the news or a media release. Uh, but I wanted to share this uplifting story with you all tonight. On Friday, the special events committee met to discuss the events calendar, as Lauren said. Um, we're busy planning movies in the park. We should have that all figured out, um, and have a budget by hopefully the, the next meeting. And then we are putting together a calendar that will have all of the special events. Um, that go around in the city and not just city-run things, but like the garage sale. Um, stuff so that we can have a year in advance. So as Lauren said, people can put that on their calendar. I, I think I'm pretty excited with where the special events committee is heading, uh, and I feel we've accomplished a lot in just one meeting. Uh, next Wednesday I have a Metro Waste Committee meeting. And I just wanted to end by saying thank you to Whitney for all of the hard work that she has done. To change the way that Windsor Heights communicates with our residents and by making renting the community event center easier. Whitney has been instrumental in making sure that our social media pages, uh, are updated or were updated during the road construction time, which was nice for residents. She's taken us to a higher level of communication with our residents. Whitney was also one of the reasons that movies in the park was such a success. She did some Facebook lives, took pictures of everyone having fun and made sure that everywhere she could post about the movie or event she did. Be it on a mom's blog, blog page, Instagram next door, as well as Facebook, plus adding it to local schools. Thank you also for setting up the doodle polls, making sure that we all know the Zoom link for our council meetings. I'm notorious for losing that email. And answering all of my questions. Um, just want to wish Whitney good luck as she starts her, uh, this new adventure and thank her for her time here at Windsor Heights. And that's it.
Thank you, Susan. Well said. With that, we move to eight. Move to adjourn, anybody?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Susan Skerries.
Yes.
Joseph Jones.
Yes.
Michael Libby. Lauren. Lauren Campbell.
Yes.
And Teresa Harms.
Yes.
Thank you, council. Have a good night.
Thank you.